Hi, Emma. How are you going?
Yeah, not too bad, thanks. How are you?
Yeah, good. You're dialing in remote, obviously.
Yes.
We go live, live, live. Okay, thanks. Otherwise, they're, they're speaking, yeah.
The catch was being so broad.
Well, I agree.
So we're.
Once I realised that.
Funny one.
Yeah. I live. Probably have to say that's massive.
As long as we can read it.
Now she has no actual.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning, everyone.
Over to me. Thank you. We are now live.
Okay, thank you very much, Sam. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the West Australian Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, the twenty-third of July, two thousand and twenty-five. I'd like to welcome all of those in person and online today. The meeting is being livestreamed and recorded and will be available via the commission's website or YouTube. Commission members may refer to technical devices throughout the meeting to assist them in considering the information before them, or to take notes throughout the meeting to assist with deliberations. In opening the meeting, I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the lands of the Wurundjeri people of the Ngunnaw nation and pay our respects to elders past and present. Given that I'm attending remotely today and due to some trouble with my voice, I have asked the deputy chair to please help assist running the agenda today. So at this point, I will hand over to Commissioner Heron to go through this part of the agenda. Thank you very much, Deputy Chair. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Chair. In terms of attendance today, we have in person myself, Ray Heron as Deputy Chair, Commissioner Bennett, Commissioner Brooks, Commissioner Lakey. Commissioner Sandry is on her way, I understand. Online, we have Commissioner Adair and Commissioner Hall with, obviously, the chairperson, Commissioner Cole. We do have apologies from Commissioner Shears. There are a number of disclosures of interest this morning. In relation to item three point one, the MRS amendment for ECU Mount Lawley, Commissioner Brooks has a direct pecuniary interest. As Commissioner Brooks is an employer of Abakwa, is currently engaged by Development WA to provide water management assistance and reporting. In relation to three point one, myself, as an indirect pecuniary interest, the application has been prepared by Urbis and I am a previous employee of Urbis. In relation to three point one, Commissioner Hall, an indirect pecuniary, as Commissioner Hall is on the board of Development WA, who are the applicants. Item three point two, which is the standard structure plan, East Wanaroo Precinct seven. Commissioner Bennett, an indirect pecuniary, as Commissioner Bennett's employer, CLE, acts for LSP proponents of this site on other projects. Item three point two, again, Commissioner Brooks, direct pecuniary as Abakwa is currently engaged by DPLH to provide water management. Technical support services for the East Wanaroo District Structure Plan. Item three point three, which is the standard structure plan precinct eight. Commissioner Bennett, an indirect pecuniary, Commissioner Bennett's employer, CLE, acts for LSP proponents on other projects. Item three point three, standard structure plan precinct eight, Commissioner Brooks, as per previous. Commissioner Lakey has also a direct, a very indirect pecuniary interest as JDSI are working on the project and he sits on the JDSI board. Item three point four, the precinct fifteen, Commissioner Bennett, Commissioner Bennett's employer, CLE, acts for the LSP proponents. Item three point four, Commissioner Brooks, again, as per previous, item three point four, myself, as my previous employer, Urbis, represent a landowner in that precinct. Item four point one, Commissioner Bennett, an actual impartiality, Commissioner Bennett's employer, CLE, have acted for a developer who has made a submission under the DWA RFDP. Do you want to explain what that is or?
Quest for development.
There we go. Thank you. Item four point one, which is the planning control area for State Hill Road, Commissioner Hall, a perceived impartiality. As Dev WA is a landowner near the site and Commissioner Hall is a, on the Dev WA board. Sorry, just clarifying. So that's a perceived impartiality and you're looking to participate in that discussion?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, I have no issues unless anyone else, no? Okay. Item four point five, the Stock Road Bullsbrook Planning Control Area, Commissioner Bennett, an indirect pecuniary. Commissioner Bennett's employer, CLE, acts for harvest, a landowner within the PCA area. And so you'll be exiting for that, yes. Okay. Item four point six, the Brabham and Datam precincts, Commissioner Bennett, actual impartiality. Commissioner Bennett's employer, CLE, acts for Dev WA and Pete JV on the adjoining amendment area. And again, actual, so that's all good. Item four point six, also Commissioner Lakey, an indirect pecuniary. Commissioner Lakey was previously employed by Pete, who were one of the development partners, and you'll be exiting for that as well, I'm assuming, yes. Item four point six, Commissioner Hall, perceived impartiality as a board member of Dev WA. And item four point seven, the Helena Valley Urban Precinct, recommendation minister, Commissioner Brooks, a perceived impartiality. As you were previously engaged to prepare the forceful management plan for the site. The project has concluded, so you're seeking to participate in that item. I have no issues. Do any other? No? Okay, thank you very much. I also need to highlight that the, we have an interest in common, that is, the WA Planning Commission is both a landowner and decision maker. In relation to items three point three, four point one, four point two, four point three, and four point six. This is an interesting common shared by members and not considered to prejudice the ability to make impartial decisions. In terms of disclosures of representation, we have on item three point one, the MRS amendment for ECU, Commissioner Cole. And that's in terms of representation, Commissioner Cole met with the proponents and consultants on this item in the normal course of his chairperson of the WA PC. And has not been provided with any additional information that is not available to other members of the commission. Item three point two, which is precinct seven, Commissioner Lakey, Commissioner Lakey is the chairperson of the Priority Corridor Working Group. Item three point three, Commissioner Lakey, similarly, priority working group, and item three point four. So all the precincts in terms of the priority corridor working group. I think that's all of them. Are there any others that anyone wishes to highlight? No. Okay. So next, in terms of a declaration due consideration, can all members please indicate that they have considered the agenda items before them today? Thank you. That's everyone. In terms of questions from members, there were questions which were circulated from Commissioner Brooks and myself, Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Adair. And additional information was provided. Are you satisfied that that information has answered those questions? Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Deputy Chair, I might just, the information provided was excellent, but I do just wouldn't mind discussing it when the item comes up on the agenda.
Certainly.
Four point twelve.
Okay. And as I say, additional information has been provided. There was the most recent, which was in relation to some additional modifications to the structure plan, and I'm assuming all members have seen and reviewed that.
Yep.
Confirmation of previous minutes. Can I have a mover and a securer? Commissioner Brooks and Commissioner, I was going to say Commissioner Bianca, but.
Sorry, I said.
Sandry?
That's all.
Thank you. And over to deputations and presentations, which I'll hand over to Sam, who will also be discussing how we will be slightly modifying the schedule today, dealing with certain items.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Firstly, I will apologize to those watching online. We do have a little bit of a YouTube difficulty in that. You can only see what's happening in the boardroom here, so we are working in the background to resolve that. And our deputations will mostly be in the boardroom this morning, but for those online, they won't be able to see Commissioner Hall, Commissioner Adair, Chairperson Cole at this stage. But we are working rapidly to resolve that. My apologies. As the Deputy Chair alluded to this morning, in order to manage the large number of conflicts of interest that we've all heard this morning and some quorum associated with that. We do need to adjust the agenda order slightly. So we will be. Sorry, I won't get distracted by what's happening there. So we will be dealing with the deputations on item three point one, followed by item three point two, followed by item three point three. The commission will consider each of those items, and then we will move to the deputation on the item three point three, and then the commission will consider the decision on that item. So I do welcome everyone that is present in order to make a deputation to the West Australian Planning Commission today, either before via Zoom. You will be invited to join the commission at the table or promoted to a panelist via the delivery of your deputation this morning. You have been advised of your allocated time, which will appear on, if managed by a timer, which will appear on the screen, which will count down the allocated time. If you do have a PowerPoint presentation this morning, this will be displayed on the screen, and you're requested to advise us as you wish to advance the slides. So moving to the first deputation on the agenda this morning. And we will farewell. Commissioners Heron and Brooks. And Commissioner Paul.
Commissioner Hall is on this one. You do have an indirect pecuniary. Thank you.
There we go. Yep, so Commissioner Hall leaving. So firstly, so moving to the deputation on item three point one. Which is the MRS amendment for ECU Mount Lawley redevelopment, and we're welcoming Carl Williams, Miriam Yukub, Megan Gammon and Farida Farag to the table if you'd like to join us. Thank you. And I am now advised that our YouTube has been resolved. A point on the screen, so over to you when you're ready. Thank you.
All right. Look, thank you very much for the opportunity to make a deputation on the ECU Mount Lawley MRS amendment. Next slide. So just a bit of project background, ECU Mount Lawley, five kilometres from the first CBD strategic, eighteen point six hectare site. Some, some direct transport and public transport links founding the site. Some key project milestones leading up to where we are today. So in twenty twenty, the Perth City Deal was announced for the relocation of the ECU Mount Lawley Campus to, to the CBD. Development WA was approved as a stake proponent to deliver the ECU Mount Lawley site in twenty twenty-one. And that was followed up in twenty twenty-four with a business case that went to government, supported, that was followed by community consultation. And then moving forward with some key milestones we're looking to achieve is in early twenty twenty-six next year, ECU Campus will be opened in the city for students. And then by the end of next year, the Mount Lawley relocated from its current, current uses. Next slide, please. In terms of the key project outcomes, of that business case in twenty twenty-four that was approved by government. So certainly an expectation for some, some housing opportunities up to approximately nine hundred dwellings across the site. Varying densities, including opportunities for social and affordable housing, substantial public space and educational opportunities as well. Construction of key buildings on site and the reuse of those where viable, putting the WAPA facilities and opportunities for community hub and arts cultural precinct. There's some substantial infrastructure that traverses the site, so that will need to be dealt with as part of the redevelopment. And then there's also the opportunity for a new inner-city primary school, city format primary school, which has been announced by government earlier this year. So slot was. In terms of the planning framework and strategic alignment, as I mentioned earlier, the MRS, certainly the first step in delivering the strategic projects on the state. It is supported by and is consistently state, state government, planning policies which are listed there. And certainly the amendment will allow the next stages in the statutory planning and delivery process. And as I mentioned earlier, it will unlock the side's potential to deliver housing, public, public open space and community uses across the, across the former campus site. Next slide, please. In terms of, in terms of commitment, this has been supported by a strong project governance frame, governance framework, it's a government steering committee, of which there's senior representation from the Department. Planning Lands and Heritage, City of Stirling, to name, to name a few on, on that group. There's a project steering group as well as community groups that have been established to start informing the planning process, including the MRS and master planning. A substantial community stake engagement has, has been undertaken to date across the site. And there's been no objections received to date through the pre-referral process. So I'll just hand over to Urbis.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioners and all. Next couple of slides. Next one. So as you know, look, it's very well-written reports. I won't seek to repeat anything in that, but obviously going from a public purpose MRS reserve to predominantly urban. But with a public purpose high school reserve to the south over the WAPA site. What you would have read in the report is that obviously that reflects an announcement by government for that to go to Mount Lawley Senior High School. That has evolved since that time, and there are investigations underway in a business case to look into WAPA Library and Admin, which exists just to the north for a broader creative arts hub. So we're, we're seeking resolution of that, and hopefully pre-advertising, we will know the outcome of that and be able to adjust that public purpose reserve accordingly. Being progressed as a standard amendment, and we're obviously very supportive of the officer's report, sorry, in supporting that. And seeking concurrent amendment under the City of Stirling planning scheme, and the city has been very supportive in that regard to date. Moving through in terms of the merit of the application, so as Carl mentioned, aligns with state aspiration for urban consolidation, infill development. It's been informed by considerable technical input, I guess, over and above what we would normally do for an MRS, given the broader planning that's occurring. Particularly around elements such as tree retention and contamination and the like, accommodating a variety of uses suitable to this location. And as Carl mentioned, informed by extensive community consultation and will enable future structure, structure planning. Moving through, it has been informed by an indicative concept which sets the broad structure, but probably given time limitations, if you skip to the next one. Critically, what's been happening in, in the background is a very detailed master plan process, which is currently out for public comment. This provides a non-statutory framework to guide the site's future direction and ultimately informing the next stage, which is a precinct structure plan. That's been developed through extensive community engagement, technical work, and in direct collaboration with the city and other agencies. And skipping to the next slide, this gives a broad overview, and I won't get into too much detail, but I guess the headline for the master plan and what's going to inform future planning is. Nine hundred to eleven hundred new dwellings and a diversity of those, a new urban primary school in the centre there. Approximately fifteen percent of the site, public open space, opportunities for small-scale retail. And critically and importantly retained campus buildings to provide for housing in that creative arts hub. So that's ending advertising shortly, and hopefully with a positive outcome today, we will start progressing the precinct structure planning. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Carl and Megan, for the deputations. Really appreciate that. I'll now open up to members for any questions. Thank you, Commissioner Bennett.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks for the deputation. You mentioned the master plan process and the concept you're proposing. I understand completely in alignment with the state government strategy in terms of infill and consolidation. The report talks to kind of to foraging habitat on the site. And I understand the statutory planning process in terms of a precinct structure plan and the ability to recognise significant vegetation through that. Can you just talk to the work that's been done around understanding environmental rights on the site and how the PSP will respond?
Yeah, sure. So to date, there's been environmental work undertaken, which includes mapping of all trees and assessment of the significance, particularly in the context of carnibees. So that has informed the MRS and will inform PSP. There's also, one of the key drivers of the project is tree retention. So if you look at the master plan and those green linkages, that is really focused around retention of trees and obviously retention of that habitat. So that will continue, that work will continue and be informing the PSP.
But it is also a formal landfill site, so we've progressed the environmental investigations probably to a point that's far more advanced than you typically have at an MRS or a detailed site investigation stage. We're working really hard with the team to, to map out the best trees on site and to retain those, the structure, the master plan reflects that.
Thank you. Members from any other, any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Sandry.
Thank you. Thank you for the deputations. Just a question regarding the proposed primary school site. And why that's not being proposed, we've noted in the MRS amendment?
Because that can exist under an urban zone, so that will be appropriately reflected under the City of Stirling planning scheme. And that work, the boundaries of that will be set through the structural planning process and further engagement with the Department of Education. And then in the future, once normalised, that will be reflected through a local reservation in the City of Stirling scheme.
Yeah, maybe I have a further question for the department on that. And then. You had a discuss in the deputation that there might be some variances in the boundary of the high school site, is that correct? Following.
Yes.
Situation.
Yes. So currently, what the MRS shows is the WAPA site as public purpose high school, and that reflects the latest government announcement, which was a few years ago. As I mentioned, work has progressed and investigations are underway at WAPA, the admin, which is just north of that, and the library on Alexander Drive for a broader creative arts hub. Now, if that progresses positively, that will be considered as a broader public purpose, potentially special use reserve, which could include those sites as well. So it could expand, and that's currently being resolved. And I guess in speaking with DPLH around working towards a resolution pre-advertising, so that, knowing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, members. Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Carl and Miriam and Megan and Farida for your deputation today.
Thank you. So we are now moving to deputations on item, let's see, from, we'll hear from the City of Wanaroo on item three point three and three point four. So we will welcome back Commissioner Hall. We will have her well, Commissioner, in it.
It's only if you're all of them, because you'll need to have the information in order to.
Yes, okay.
Once you are.
I welcome the of Wanaroo to talk about the precincts in Wanaroo today, and they will be joining us via Zoom. So City of Wanaroo, we will to panel. Morning, City of Wanaroo. Can you, can I ask that you turn your, so you may participate in the meeting today? City of Wanaroo, can you hear us?
Sorry, yeah, the, the sound was off for a minute. Can you hear me?
Ben, thank you very much. Can I just ask, please, who we've got joining us on screen today?
Sure. So my name's Nick Deveckis. I'm the manager of approval services here at the City of Wanaroo, and to my left is Davi. Davi is a specialist planner here with, at the City of Wanaroo.
Wonderful. Thanks very much. I'm over to you to deliver your deputation when you're ready. Thank you.
Brilliant. Thank you so much. Good morning, Chair, Deputy Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for, thank you for the opportunity to address you today on behalf of the city. I'll be speaking to all three structure plans under consideration today. At the outset, I wish to clarify that I'm not here to advocate for or revisit the full detail of the city's position on the structure plans before you. The council has formally, formally considered the local structure plans for precincts seven, eight and fifteen, and resolved to support their progression. Subject to a range of recommended modifications. That resolution, along with the city's assessment reports, is a matter of public record. And has been made available as part of the formal referral process. Instead, my purpose today is to. Instead, my purpose today is to reflect the city's strong overarching support for the advancement of these structure plans and to briefly highlight two specific matters of strategic importance as the area transitions from planning to implementation. The city commends the commission and the department and the respective proponents for the considerable progress that has been made. The East Waneroo District Structure Plan has long been identified as a cornerstone of Perth's northwest expansion and the delivery of the first local structure plans represents a critical step in converting that vision into tangible outcomes. These structure plans will unlock substantial areas of developable land and provide a diverse mix of housing to support the state's response to the current housing supply challenge. Their preparation and assessment have required exceptional coordination across the state and local government. And the city is pleased to have contributed to a process that has maintained both pace and planning integrity. Consistent with the city's adopted planning framework for East Waneroo, there is a strong emphasis within the structure plans on livability, integration with landscape and character development. These are not just technical matters, they are fundamental to the success of new communities. To that end, it is particular, the city is particularly supportive of the inclusion of the sense of place provisions within part one of the structure plans. These provisions provide a planning mechanism through which local identity, cultural values and environmental features can be embedded into the built form, streetscapes and public spaces. The aim is not simply to create functional neighbourhoods, but distinctive places where people feel connected and where the character of East Waneroo is clearly expressed. The second matter I wish to draw the commission's attention to is the city's ongoing support for the establishment of continuous parkland links around the lake systems, in particular Lake Marangina. The city acknowledges the extensive public open space network already proposed across the precincts. However, we remain of the view that a connected green link encircling Lake Marangina would significantly enhance the area's environmental, recreational and landscape values. Then this initiative would align with the original intent of the district structure plan to integrate the lake systems as key organising features of the urban form. It would deliver continuous pedestrian and cyclist movement, strengthen habitat connectivity and elevate the community's access to the lakes as places of recreation and retreat. Importantly, it is an outcome that would, could be realised through relatively modest adjustments during subsequent planning stages and would not require major structural changes, structural changes to the existing plans. In conclusion, the city of Waneroo reiterates its support for the progression of these plans, acknowledges the extensive work of all parties involved and looks forward to continuing our shared role in shaping East Waneroo. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the city? From members? No? Thank you very much for your deputation this morning.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So moving on to the next deputation now, which is on precinct fifteen. So we will farewell Heron. And we will welcome Fassi Abetka, Damien Shepherd, Cole Dutton and Clande Pauline. Thank you.
Good morning and thank you everyone for the opportunity to make a deputation today. So as we said, Damian Shepherd Stockland, Casher and Candy, CDP, who've worked on the project from day one and Cole Dutton, our state. As Stockland, we're the primary developer within precinct fifteen, so we represent circa eighty-five percent of the land within that cell. We're obviously here today speaking in support of the recommendation and in our opinion, it's a really well-written and formed report and recommendation. So we thank the officers for that and not proposing to rehash anything that's in the report primarily here for questions. We definitely want to acknowledge all of the efforts that have gone in over the years, right from Matt down to Glenn through to Zarena to get to this point and obviously Robert Hodges over prior years as well. And then key staff from the city as well, including Mark, Nick and Dan Sheehan to get us to this point as well. So for us, this obviously follows the lifting of urban deferment that we're here for last month and we're very appreciative of that decision and also very appreciative of the timeframe with the local structure plan, following so closely behind that and the ability to run those processes concurrently was really important and a great outcome. So thank you all for that. And the local structure plan for us started with lodgment back in October of twenty twenty-three and that was following the deal we did with the landowner back then in two thousand and twenty-one. And we're really proud of the local structure plan that we've developed. We see it as a real heart of East Waneroo. It's got the regional open space, high school, activity centre, the Midtria Transit Station and a whole bunch of other stuff, whilst also still achieving just under thirty-five percent green open spaces. So we think it's got a really good balance of outcomes. And in terms of housing supply, earthworks to deliver the first few stages are already well underway. So the contract has been mobilised for some time now and that's already well underway. And we've got a subsidy that's been in the system since February and we're hopeful it's kind of close to resolution. And we're working towards achieving first titles in this precinct in round kind of the second quarter of next calendar year. So a real opportunity to get housing and supply in market really quickly. No, pass to the Kesha.
Great, thank you. I just really wanted to offer a point of clarification in relation to our deputation. When we launched it in writing, our deputation was supported by a request to modify a number of the suggested modifications, draft modifications and we objected to those. But since then, that's last week, we worked very closely with the, really just points of clarification and fine tuning the text to make sure that modifications that are put forward are very precise and an offer a clear guidance of where the structure plan is going to go to in terms of any, any modifications. We managed to resolve any of the outstanding issues and any ambiguity attached to, to any of the wording and we are happy to report that the revised draft modification, which I believe dated twenty first of July. We've got no objections to any of the modifications that are proposed in there. So we are happy to accept them. And again, thank you very much to the officers for working with us on this. I think it'll streamline the, the work moving forward. You to answer any questions, just in case if they are.
Thank you very much for your deputation today. It's Emma Cole online here. I'm going to hand over to members now with any questions? Any questions? No? Okay. Thank you very much for your deputation today.
We are now moving to deputations on East Waneroo precinct eight. So that's items three point three and you can. So we are welcoming back Commissioner Heron and we're going to farewell Commissioner Lakey. So the first deputation on East Waneroo precinct eight, we're welcoming Chris Lewis, who's joining us via Zoom this morning. Good morning, Chris. If you can see and hear us, can I ask that you turn your audio and video on so you may participate in the commission meeting this morning?
Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you, Chris.
Thank, thank you. Sorry about that.
We can now see you. So welcome to the planning commission meeting this morning. Over to you to deliver your deputation. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. Whilst I understand four hectares within a large structure plan area of two hundred and sixty-one hectares may seem insignificant to the commission, it, it isn't to us as landowners. The, the purpose of my presentation is to object to a proposed modification that I'll go through. The original LSP proposed residential development over the southern portion of lot two, our site, approximately two point one eight hectares. The inclusion of the residential development followed firstly, the adherence to requirements under the district structure plan for site steam parklands, subject to confirmation, which was two detailed or two spring surveys that were undertaken and a report written. Further to this, we then did detailed vegetation mapping by One Tree Botanical and Western Environmental. This included field analysis, assessment, and assessment, sorry. Floristic analysis and broken down into five quadrants as well as technical reporting. So we could fully understand the values of the site. At the same time, we had, once we had received that information, we undertook discussions with both the Department of Planning and the city of Waneroo. And the proposed plan of the residential in the southern section was agreed in principle. If I could advance the slides, please. This just shows the site in terms of what we had proposed on the left-hand side with two point one hectares of native vegetation retained and then the southern section as residential. The right-hand side is the proposed modification. What I'd like to bring to the commission's attention here is the road structure. Ranch Road exists to the north and has for many decades. Both proposals propose a road to the west and the east of the site, whereas we proposed obviously then also a road that buffered the area that is proposed to be retained. The modification proposes a road at our boundary to the south. If you could please advance the slides. Western Environmental concluded that twenty A was present over the northern portion of the site and therefore to be retained as P and R. It's, it is actually about two point one, excuse the one point. Sorry, it's one point nine two hectares. This represents only two percent of the total land that's been set aside in this local structure plan as regional reserve. The proposed development does retain buffers in respect to the extent of the FCT twenty A. In contrast, DPLH and the EPA have provided, we've undertaken significant science, science and investigation in the site and really in terms of the proposed modification, there has been no scientific basis for the modification. And my understanding is that the decision really was based around a walk around over the total local structure plan area. DPLH, obviously on request of the EPA chair, have proposed the modification to make the whole of the area P and R. The basis of the retention relates to three key issues. Reduce risk effects, edge effects, increase connectivity and meet minimum viable criteria, maintaining existing viability. If we can advance the slide, please.
If I could ask Chris if you could wrap it up as your time has concluded, but we'll give you a couple of more seconds to bring it out.
Okay, I'll then just round out to say that risk of edge effect really is there's already, well, there's one existing road and they're not, and they're proposing or maintaining the two roads to west and east. It's only the southern road that they're looking to move and we have created a buffer. Connectivity, Ranch Road really sits in isolation. The modifications to the structure plan are suggesting to create one through the road that runs to the east. The most, probably the most, one of the most important points is when you look at existing, maintain existing viability, really to restrict a portion of, of development over the site to make it a suitable size to managing and convenient is really improper purpose. You could argue the opposite, that if it's too small, it shouldn't be retained, but we're not arguing that. We believe that the area should be retained. The science supports what we've done and therefore we're asking the commission to reject the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Can I ask, do any members have any questions? No. Thank you very much for your submission, Chris.
Thank you.
For the next deputation on, also on item three point three in the agenda, we're welcoming Nick Grindrod and Mitch Frown. With this morning. At the table. When you're ready.
Good morning. I'm Nick Grindrod of Rise Urban, representing the developer of lots two and forty-one Pinjar Road, Marangina. I present you today in relation to the precinct eight structure plan. Next slide, please. We currently have this subdivision application in the system pending determination of this structure plan. Next slide again, please. Lots two and forty-one are a special case as they included in both the precinct seven and eight structure plans. The precinct seven schedule of modifications proposes to resolve this by requiring their removal. You can see that our subdivision plan matches precinct seven. Next slide, please. But there are a few differences in precinct eight, being the Pinjar Road intersection location, a four-way local road intersection adjacent and POS twenty-one on the east side, which is that small one. We have no objection to this site being included in the precinct eight structure plan, but we think that the precinct seven design is a better urban design outcome. So in this regard, we're seeking for the WAPC to make four amendments to the precinct eight schedule of mods. Next slide, please. Our first requested amendment is to delete POS twenty-one. This POS is intended to be used for drainage. However, we're proposing for drainage to be managed via a swale in the neighbourhood connector along the foreshore. It's that little blue line on the screen. If POS twenty-one is deleted, the structure plan will still provide well over ten percent POS and sufficient local POS will still be available to serve the residents within this subdivision. The city supports its removal too. Next slide, please. Our second requested amendment is simply to require the precinct eight structure plan design to reflect the precinct seven structure plan for lots two and forty-one. Next slide, please. Our third amendment, and this is the most important to us, is in relation to market garden and poultry farm interface treatments. Recommended modification nineteen effectively codifies the Department of Health's guidelines within the structure plan and requires a vegetative buffer to be implemented. However, we're seeking for the modification to be expanded to provide a pathway for applicants to demonstrate why an alternative interface treatment may be acceptable. We've had an industry expert on agricultural amenity impacts, who's also a doctor of organic chemistry, conclude that there's negligible risk of the nearby market garden and poultry farm impacting future houses within lots two and forty-one. And there's no need for a vegetative buffer. We're concerned that the current one-size-fits-all approach could unnecessarily delay this site and others from being developed. You can see from this plan that the entire development site is within that three hundred meter buffer. Next slide, please. Our fourth amendment is deletion of a requirement for Wolf Dean to construct a road through the Bush Forever site to the south of lot forty-one. This site isn't in the precinct eight structure plan. Access through it isn't required to serve the site. And we believe that as landowner, it's the state government's responsibility to build the road. Thank you for your time and Mitch and I are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
If I may, thank you. That was a very succinct deputation. Maybe if we can just go back to the slides where you've got precinct seven and eight. And if you can talk through that you're not a few bits, that's okay?
Are you okay if I point the screen? So if we go to, yes, we'll start.
Be mindful that the, sorry, the commissioners online can't see where you're pointing.
So on the west side, there's a loop road and then there's a left-in, left-out intersection, the very northwest corner of lots two and forty-one. We go to the precinct eight structure plan, please. So you can see here that the left-in, left-out has been moved further south. So that would effectively be a four-way intersection just there. And the connector road is also to the south. So we would like the this little bit of road here to be deleted, the left-in, left-out intersection picked up here and that road pushed through that.
Okay, so just for the purpose of those online, so it is the, on the precinct eight structure plan modification slide, where the left-in, left-out is indicated that that be moved to the north.
Approximately fifty metres, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. One other, one other question, just with respect to the poultry farms matter. Given that these provisions were written into the structure plan, what's the structure plan of the due regard document operations if you meet the objectives essentially of the structure plan? Is there a necessity in your view for that to be written in?
I guess it comes down to a matter of certainty. It is a baseline requirement and we accept that a structure plan is a due regard document, but I guess our concern is that if the baseline requirement is for such a substantial buffer to be applied, then the logical starting point in a subdivision decision-making process is for this site to be undevelopable. And we think that there should be a provision that makes it clear that if we go and do the science and can actually demonstrate that there aren't going to be any impacts, that that can and should be considered by the department. And right now with the current wording, there's no certainty in that respect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall.
Thanks Deputy Chair. Thanks for the deputation. You've raised four pretty major points. I'm just wondering, have you raised these previously to this meeting and if so, when and what was the response?
So we've mostly been working with the department in relation to the subdivision. We're not the proponents of this structure plan. Given it's a smaller portion in the southwest. So we have, we raised these in the written deputation, but in relation to. So we have, we raised these in the written deputation, but in relation to communications with the commission, that's it.
Any further questions, Commissioner Hall?
Yeah. No, thank you.
Are there any additional questions? I just had one in terms of you, you made mention of, and particularly I suppose going back to this point, about the alternative treatment in terms of the interface. So has that been discussed beyond the department? Because then obviously that's a Department of Health, I think, guideline that is being applied. Has there been any discussions with the relevant department on that?
I'm not actually sure on the top of my head. We've been working directly with the Department of Planning, Lands and Heritage in relation to that. The referral period is over for our subdivision application. And there's been a lot of movement, of course, given it was only about two months ago that we realised that we're in the precinct date structure plan and not precinct seven. So yeah, unfortunately I can't directly answer your question.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for your deputation today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next deputation on item 3.3 on the agenda is from Dennis and Frank Corangio, glad to join us at the table. Yellen Frank? Yeah, yes.
Sorry.
Jeez. Over to you when you're ready.
Thank you, Commissioners and officers here for the opportunity to speak here today. I'm Dan Chatley from Animal Management Room and you know Frank Corangio from CDP Planning. We're here today on behalf of the owner Dominic and Gino Lenzo, the owners of lot 39 on Pinjar Road and lot five on Ranch Road. We'd just like to speak to support the recommendation and just say that we appreciate the opportunity that the DPLH officers have given. They've come out to walk the site, looked at things in detail to date. I think it's important that the, the understanding they've, they've made on some of the particular issues such as the bush matters has been well regarded and we appreciate that effort. And we think that's resulted in the pragmatic LSP that we see here before us today. Having said that, we would like to seek to work further with the development industry and the government stakeholders regarding the approach to the market garden spray drift buffers and the implications that the proposed LSP mods may have on the matter of development in the area. We appreciate that the science will be variable site by site, some strawberry farms, bean farms, other, other things. But we think it's, it's very important that the steps are put in place by DPLH and the commission to try and have a consistent approach to make sure that large areas aren't unnecessarily sterilised for long periods of time with lot releases. So we just think that's an important matter to raise, be carefully managed. Other than that, we very much support the, the LSP document. And any questions would be happy, thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the submitters? Right, thank you very much. I think that that will be an item for discussion when the items.
Thank you.
Next deputation also, also on item 3.3 on the agenda is from Rod Dixon, Rod Gardner and Chris Green. When you're ready, thanks.
Good morning, my name's Rod Gardner from Cube Property Group and Rod Dixon and Chris Green from Row Group. Thank you very much for the opportunity to provide this deputation. Cube Property Group has taken a lead role in the coordination of the precinct date structure plan on behalf of the owners within precinct date, of which there are five developers. I'd like to also acknowledge the constructive and collaborative negotiations and discussions we've had with both the city of Waneroo and the DPLH staff in, throughout this local structure plan process, which we believe has culminated in a balanced schedule of modifications, which we'd like to support. Cube Property Group, along with one or two other developers in precinct date have already lodged subdivision applications. Precinct date is frontal development, it has access to services and isn't constrained by any groundwater issues and is a logical frontal development. Our intention, subject to subdivision approval, is to commence development immediately. And I'll now hand over to Rod to talk more specifically about the structure plan itself.
Thanks, Rod. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. As the slide indicates, we're supportive of the report and recommendations and appreciative of the work that's gone into getting the report. For you, key messages, there has been a lot of engagement. The land is capable of being serviced, as Rod's indicated. There's been a fairly detailed response, not only to the site, but to the environmental features noted by the EPA in its advice. And look, we have an opportunity here, here to bring on some 2,500, slightly less as a result of the modifications. 2,500 drawings. Next slide, please. I won't dwell on these, other than to say, precinct eight is frontal, as Rod indicated, characterised by Lake Marigina Up and Little Lake Marigina Up. And you can see there some of the banks you would have identified at the district level. Next slide. Integrates well with precinct seven to the south, precinct 15 to the east. You can see the layout provides for a good, robust set of connections through to the lake environments and provides for about 12.43% open space. Lodged in April 24, a lot of work gone in to get us to this point. Next slide. Thanks. So you can see here, green linkages through to the lake system and between areas of retention and open space are evident. Centrally located school, a good robust network connecting Pinjar Road from the west through to Kuji Road in the north. Very logical as an extension of the East Waneroo area from Bankshire Grove. And I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you for your deputation, Rod. Just a question, just probably from the previous submitter relating to the area that was in precinct seven, now in precinct eight. Do you see any issue regarding the road realignment that's being sought by that deputy?
Given it's a standalone pair of lots, we're happy to be guided by the Department of Commission on its decision there. The changes can be accommodated as you see fit without material change to the structure plan area.
Thank you. And then there was also a suggestion by that deputy regarding the deletion of public open space 21 and rather replace it with a swale to the right of where their proposed subdivision is. Do you have a view on that?
Again, happy to be guided by the department and yourselves in your decision. As I noted, 12.43% open space provided across the precinct. If you're comfortable, open space and drainage can be accommodated. We would say it doesn't have a material impact on the rest of the plan.
Okay. And the last one was, and this is raised by both deputies, one in relation to the market garden spray drift and the other in relation to the poultry farm. Do you have a view in terms of the provisions that are proposed as part of the structure plan? Obviously you're, you have an intimate knowledge of the structure plan, how the provisions were derived from Department of Health. Have a particular issue if they were modified to allow for an alternative subject to meeting compliance with Department of Health requirements?
Look, I think some of this is about tone in the way that specific provisions are proposed. We accept that the land is in transition. The poultry farm have acknowledged their transitioning out. A number of the market gardens are already acquired. The structure plan is approved today, those conversations will no doubt continue. A number of the operations actually only leased. Dwyer has written to most of the market garden operators to advise them that all offices won't be renewed. So we have that environment. Having said that, we accept report recommendations as proposed and inclusion of those provisions. I think some of the concern is perhaps about a presumption against unless, rather than the commission may approve subdivisions having regard to the need to address this issue. So that, that tone creates uncertainty for the proponent. And I would suggest perhaps that minor, it could be made, but otherwise we remain supportive.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Cole.
Thank you. You've, thank you very much for the deputation today, Rod, Rod and Chris. We've had some very positive support from the city of Waneroo today. But one thing that they have put forward is their desire for a connected green link around Lake Marigina Up. And I just wanted to give you the opportunity to respond to that.
Certainly, thank you. We are very supportive of the intent of that and structure plan certainly seeks to accommodate the district structure plan identified green link from the north through and connecting into precinct seven. We've had the opportunity, working on both seven and eight, to ensure that that does connect to the lake and down its eastern side. So in terms of the report and recommendations, recognising both the district level link and some local internal links. Yeah, very supportive.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall.
Thanks Deputy Chair, thanks for the presentation today. I just wanted to ask about the public open space and I heard there's about 12%, I think Rod, you mentioned in the report, talks even more, but a lot of that is restricted public open space because it serves an environmental or a drainage function, which is great to see. I see that only, the only active space for sport and recreation is associated with the school. Can you outline the discussions with the Department of Education? Because sometimes they won't allow the oval to be used for public purposes. And I'm just wondering, is that the case? If you could outline that, please.
Certainly. Look, I think the report itself deals with this issue quite well in acknowledging that, that can be used. The oval can be used. There are some areas of conservation and this is the balance that we're faced with striking. Conservation, revision of active recreational opportunities. The oval can be used. There will also be, as the report acknowledges, significant opportunities for active recreation around the lake environments as they are improved.
Commissioner Hall, is that?
And just, do you know, the one thing I was looking for was the percentage of active, because that, that doesn't seem to be made in the report. And I think it's quite a small number, but it might support what the city was saying in terms of that active loop around the lake.
Oh, I don't have the number to hand, I'm sorry, but certainly the oval itself is substantial in providing that opportunity. And it's hard to illustrate, but the lake environments, particularly Little Lake Marigina Up, is largely void of vegetation and provide a substantial opportunity through that area for active recreation.
Thanks, that's all the questions are.
Any further questions? If not, thank you very much for your today.
That include the deputations on items 3.1, 3 and 3.4. So the commission will now move on those items. So we are at 3.1. So in terms of, we will farewell Commissioner Heron and welcome back Commissioners Bennett and Lakey. And we will farewell Commissioner Hall as well. And I'll hand over to you, Chair.
Thank you, Sam. Thanks, everyone. Well, we're now at item 3.1, which is the MRS amendment for ECU Mount Lawley redevelopment and approval to advertise. Rowan Miller, Anthony Mascara and Alex Murray are joining us. I can see them reflected that they're walking towards the desk. Rowan, Anthony and Alex, we've had a really good deputation today and a good report before us. Is there anything that you wish to add? Were you happy for me to go straight to questions from members?
Thank you, Chair, we're happy for questions from members.
Thank you very much, Anthony. Members, questions on item 3.1?
Quickly, Chair, Commissioner Sandry.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a quick question, just in relation to the public school site I had asked of the deputy. What's the department's view in terms of that being public purpose?
So through the chair, so in relation to the primaries, the plant, the, so primary schools aren't reflected in the region scheme in terms of reservations, they're all under the urban zoning. So if you look at the three regions schemes, it's all urban and they're reflected under the scale.
Thank you. And then one other question was, in the deputation, it was discussed around potential movement of that public purpose boundary prior to advertising. As I read the recommendation, probably doesn't allow an adjustment. Would there, could this be modified to allow an adjustment approved by the Chair if it's?
If it's today, yes. So the commission could adopt a slightly different footprint for the amendment. However, we're recommending that, I think there's a, discussions aren't advanced enough at this point in time. So if the amendment is advertised, that allows the discussions to be finalized. And when the amendment comes back to the commission, we can then recommend any slight modification for what's been advertised. So that, that's the way forward, the department recommends. Now, that allows a submission period, so the relevant agencies can look at submission, we can report that to the commission.
So the department's views that will be advertising as is presented to us and any modifications will occur post-advertising as opposed to prior. Okay, that's fine. All right, no problem, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Sandry. Members, are there any other questions? Okay, thank you, everyone. So thanks Anthony and Alex, we'll now move to dealing with the item. So if I could please have a mover and second of the item. It's moved by Commissioner Bennett, seconded by Commissioner Lakey, thank you very much. Commissioner Bennett, do you wish to speak to the item?
Thank you, Chair. No more than to say that support the item on the basis of strategic objectives in terms of infill and development of strategic assets in close proximity to the CBD and major infrastructure. So no, I support the proposal progressing and look forward to it coming back to the commission based advertising, the finalisation.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lakey, any comments?
Oh, thank you, Chair, just to sort of endorse what Jane, Commissioner Bennett said. But also to commend WA and the department for working through this over a period of time. I think it's a very exciting opportunity, a significant real site, which I think is going to be very beneficial for the community and provide necessary housing and mobility. So I'm happy to endorse this recommendation.
Thank you. Any further comments, members? I'd just like to add that it is an exciting project and excellent infill and re-adaptive use opportunity in terms of the WAPA buildings. A really nice mix of, of uses and some really, through the master plan rather than the MRS amendment that's starting to emerge. Also just wanted to compliment Dev WA on the community engagement that they've been running throughout this process. Again, not particular to this MRS amendment, but to the broader project. It's been really comprehensive and I think the engagement really goes a long way in terms of supporting infill development in key strategic locations. So just wanted to mention that today. Are there any other comments? Is there any dissent? Thank you, that is carried. So we'll move on to item 3.4, which is the standard structure plan for East Waneroo precinct 15. The logical structure plan for Marigina Up for determination. And we are joined by Matt Selby, Glenn Coker, Serena McDonald and Navar Brick. Thank you very much. And we've heard today that the applicant is satisfied with the modifications, that there's been a lot of discussion over those. But any comments, officers, from you before we go to questions?
Thank you, Chair, not in relation to the precinct 15 from the proponent, but I would probably just like to add a comment in relation to the city of Waneroo's deputation in relation to the provision of green links and boardwalk and linkage around Lake Marigina Up.
Thank you.
The, the vision from the beginning, and I've been obviously on the journey for almost the last eight years with the district structure plan and now into the LSPs and the execution, has always been that there'll be a network around the lake to obviously enable residents to enjoy, future residents to enjoy the lake. And that's probably enhanced state position that will be into the future. As part of that work with the district ACP, which is currently sitting with council and will be back with the commission and the minister, I suspect in early part of next year. That is actually undertake what is one of the items that we funded out of that is a foreshore management plan for the lake system. So as part of that, there's a broader piece of work to be done to actually provide. So as part of that, there's a broader piece of work to be done to actually provide effectively final guidance, knowing once we also understand a bit more of the environmental, that's closer to the, the lake edge. And DBCA is also doing some work in this area to look at the further environmental values in the area. So we believe that there's an opportunity as a result of that to either, one, refine the district structure plan or at least provide some further guidance in the documentation about that. Or for council to actually able to, and for ourselves to implement for the subdivision process, construction or a contribution towards the overall network, once we know exactly what it looks like. But also, all of the structure plans and the subdivisions will be providing an interface with that particular lake, with, with the lake. So that people can use a combination of road and PSPs around the whole lake. So it's an issue that is definitely front and centre. It's just the exact mechanism is, we're not quite at that point yet. But there will be a network at the end of the day. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks very much, Matt. Any questions, members?
Just a clarif-, oh, sorry.
Would you like, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Sandry, then I'll go to Commissioner Hall.
Excellent. It should be quick. Just the deputy had mentioned that the scheduled modifications dated twenty one July twenty twenty six are those that they were happy with. I just wanted to confirm that.
Twenty twenty five?
Sorry, twenty twenty five. Yes. Madness. So I just want to confirm, are they the schedule of attachments? Have they been updated in our agenda package to reflect that?
Right, you, Chair. Yes, the scheduled modifications you have are the absolute latest and greatest version as a result of the hours of conversations with proponents during this process.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that from the department. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall.
Thanks, Chair. Look, my question is just about the deputy from Rise Urban, particularly the differences between precincts seven and eight. And I was just hoping that you could talk to that, Matt, or anyone else from the team?
Commissioner Hall, we're just dealing with fifteen at the moment.
Oh, sorry, fifteen. Thank you.
We'll come back to you on that one.
Yeah, thank you. Apologies.
No problem. Any other questions? If you can just call out. No other questions? Yes?
Excuse me, Chair. Sorry. Can I just provide a point of clarification regarding the updated schedule of modifications? So the updated schedule of modifications on item three point four is available at item one point five point two on the commission's agenda. And it's there by way of tracked changes.
Thank you. That's really helpful, Sam.
So, sorry, that, can I just seek clarification on that, given that it's not actually A six, which is referred to in the recommended?
So it's an updated A six?
Do we just reflect updated A six dated twenty one July twenty twenty five?
So we do have an alternative recommendation from the department, which I can, there on the screen?
Yes, please, Sam. Thank you.
What point one A, you will note that there's amended schedule of modifications?
Thank you. Members, any further questions? Okay, we're happy to have someone to move the amended recommendation, please.
Me to move.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Sandry is moving. And Commissioner Hall is seconding. Thank you very much. Commissioner Sandry, do you wish to speak to the item?
I think in terms of precinct fifteen, as the deputy had mentioned, they represent eighty five percent of the precinct, which allows for increased coordination in that precinct and is different to the other areas, which is, which are highly fragmented and have unique constraints attached to that. It was positive to hear that they're looking at first titles in the second quarter of twenty twenty six. The structure plan, I believe, addresses, well, the scheduled modifications addresses a number of the elements raised by external agencies and the department. And I'm pleased to hear that the department and the applicant have worked through their, the issues that they had originally suggested through their, through their written submission. And I'm happy to support it for that reason. And I think every area is an exciting area and I can't wait to see, there's a lot to solve.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Sandry. Commissioner Hall, would you like to make any comments?
Thanks, Chair. Yes, pleasing to see the collaboration that's occurred to progress this key site. It's an exciting opportunity to provide housing in a well-located area. So I support the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. Members, any further comments? I can't see any hands up. So, no. Look, I just wanted to make some comments which probably apply to all three precincts. In this particular precinct, we've, we've heard that the applicant is supportive of the modifications. And I'd like to say thank you to the department for working through that in detail with the applicant. In relation to all three precincts, I think this is a really good demonstration of, of the commission and the department and the applicants working really closely together to really accelerate and work quickly through these planning processes. We've just dealt with the urban deferral lifting at the last commission meeting and we're now dealing with the three local structure plans. It has required a higher degree of coordination between departments. I'd like to also just mention EPA, who's come in to provide environmental advice. That advice was not made available at the district structure plan level, but they have been able to work quickly to provide environmental advice on the three precincts that we're dealing with today, which has resulted in some better outcomes. And I think that that's been really well progressed in a very short space of time, again, with a lot of collaboration between EPA, EPA Services, the department and myself and Darren Walsh, working together on that. And also just in relation to a lot of the last, the last sort of coordinations in terms of the mid-tier transit corridor, which affects precinct fifteen and discussions with Department of Education over schools. So I know a lot of work has gone into this by the team to enable this to come through at this pace. And I just would like to say thank you to the departmental officers for working so collaboratively with our state, state government colleagues and with the applicants to be able to bring this forward. Are there any further comments? Any dissent? Thank you very much. That is carried.
We're just inviting Commissioner Heron back to move to item three point three. We will farewell Commissioner Lakey.
Thank you. Item three point three, and we've obviously got everyone at the table. Thank you. So perhaps if we could go to the officers first to clear, obviously the report being read, are there any items you wish to highlight? Or items in response in particular to items that may have been raised during deputations?
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I won't go into the detail that I was going to, because I'm politically, I'm relatively strapped for time or for quorum. So, but obviously one of there's, and we're dealing with precinct eight first, I do believe. Thank you. Probably just a commentary, a quick commentary in relation to Wolf Dean and their proposed application, subdivision application that we have in the system at present. There's a couple of the matters raised, which in relation to the POS location, and sorry, I'm just flicking between notes here. Between road alignments, road construction, POS location and access in and out. These are all the matters that we have been speaking to the proponent about and working through. And obviously, we couldn't get to a point of determining these subdivision applications until we have a local structure plan in play. There was early conversations about whether that site should be precinct seven or precinct eight. We did agree early that it could, it could change. We're not worried, because ultimately, the, really the main crux of the issue is the, the linkage and a neighbourhood road that extends to the south and around and goes through the Bush Forever site to the southern portion into precinct seven. So as long as that road is constructed. We have done, I've been provided with some rough estimates of what the cost of that particular road would be, associated with the subdivision condition. It's about four thousand dollars a linear metre. We're asking for thirty metres of that from either side of the Bush Forever site to be, be provided. So it's not a huge impost on development costs associated with that particular one. And the other, the location of the POS, we don't believe that you actually need to modify the local structure plan to reflect the subdivision application. That we've got general ability to be able to deal with that under, generally in accordance with, and a due regard document, being the structure plan to, to pose post-commission meeting. And obviously, the other one that has, has come up is in relation to the buffer distances associated from market gardens. And we also do have a poultry farm that is in the area, poultry farms. We are, and I've seen documentation, that the, the Lenzo property, which Mr Rangeau represents, is in the process of shutting down next year. So that buffer will be removed from, or won't sterilise any of the area. However, there will be, as Mr Dixon stated, reduction in water licences in the area, which will severely impact some of those operations. And given that it is in transition, there is the EPA guidance notes for buffer distances, which the default is three hundred metres. DOH recommend forty metres, twenty metres being vegetation and then a further twenty. We've effectively been talking to proponents and with the team about how we actually apply that. We do need to be mindful that it is a health requirement associated with the spray. And it's obviously spray drift which may occur, depending ultimately on what the top is that it does in to these areas will be, be the critical factor. You, DOH has advised that they will look at any management plan that comes along to support the reduction to forty metres. But that is the line in the sand. However, depending on how the interface is treated between any of these development blocks and a market garden, we'll need to look literally at every case by case that comes in. We are acutely aware that we don't want to sterilise land where it's unnecessary to do so. But it will come down to some, instance, there may be some future POS areas that are put in these areas. There might be a, a road interface and there might be some fencing, but also at one point eight metres, which would also help reduce spray drift. And ultimately, it also depends on the practices of the market gardeners themselves. If they're low vegetation and there's strawberry farms in that area and there's also chili and beans, they'll all spray in a slightly different manner. So it will be a constant conversation that we will be having with the proponents as they bring their subdivision application.
Thank you. Are there any questions for officers? Yes.
Through the deputy chair, I just, so just to clarify, is there a fundamental issue modifying that road? That was sought by the deputy for the Wolf Dean site?
Come down to which road exactly are we?
That's the road with the left in, left out, being pushed further north at the postwards placement just south.
We have been talking about potentially a left in, into and left out as a temporary solution, because as the land further to the north, there's an intersection. And if I could have the, are we able to get a plan up? Please, or our responses?
Confirm which attachment you'd like, Matt?
There, there is a, a four-way intersection that we further to the north. And sorry, members online, I'm not going to get, you can't. This, in here, this is the Wolf Dean. This is the, the four-way that up here. And we also have a four-way further to the south where there'll actually be appropriate. We might have some temporary, because Pinjar Road is actually an other regional road, blue road, so it carries a fair amount of traffic. We obviously don't want to compromise the, the flow of that unnecessarily. It's also, in relation to that application, we need probably some updated TIA information. But the premise is by not to allow too, to control the number of accesses to the other regional road network. So we will, yeah, because I deal with that with as a subdivisional matter.
Can I just clarify then? So there is no, in principle, issue with the relocation subject to providing suitable technical information to demonstrate it works? Is that a fair summary?
Deputy Chair, exactly. So much.
Perfect. Thank you. And then just to, just quickly, is there a fundamental issue with, you've spoken about POS, you know, that will be reviewed as you go through the subdivision processes? But in terms of that POS twenty one, and I understand they have been in discussions with the department regarding that, the deletion of POS twenty one to, in lieu of a swale on the right-hand side of their Wolf Dean subdivision, where, what is the department's position on that?
Right, Deputy Chair, we have no objection to it being relocated. There needs to be, excuse me, POS divided in the area, where it is is effectively a subdivisional matter. Main thing for us is that neighbourhood connector and its width and the ability to attain drainage. And also, there will be a pressure main associated with a pump station further to the south that will go through that particular area, whether it's on the road alignment or slightly to the east, but is yet to subject to detailed design.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall.
Thanks, Deputy Chair. My question is just in relation to the, the buffer that was just previously talked about. So I just want to make sure from a sequencing perspective that the proponent could still get a subdivision approval, even if there was, say, a poultry farm or a market garden operating, you know, given that it does take time to do the work and clear those conditions. Is that a scenario that would be possible from the department's perspective, that that would still be able to get an approval if there was a, a current operating agricultural type use next door?
Right, Deputy Chair, what we have done previously, and I say that this has got a direct correlation with this area, is that we can approve subdivision. What we do is we put a lock on the lots that would be within the buffer area. Still, there is sufficient demonstration by shutting down of the, of the facility or enough evidence that gives us comfort that you can actually get to the point of clearing associated subdivision conditions. Because we know that there's a considerable lag time between the commission granting subdivision approval and occupation once you've gone through the building cycle on particular lots. So it's, it's literally a timing sequence to allow, we know when it shuts down to an occupation with a build time of probably twelve months at this point in time for dwellings. So we can still approve. We just click, make it very clear to the applicant that there is a lock until such time as we're satisfied that those facilities have been removed.
That, so does that, Commissioner Hall?
Yeah, look, that's fantastic to hear. I'm just wondering, i- is that position documented anywhere, either in this structure plan or in a policy note other than being recorded on YouTube?
Right, Deputy Chair. No, it's not actually written down anywhere, Commissioner Hall, but it's been the, the practice of the department and the commission to be able to follow that pathway.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just had a query. The other submission that had been made was in relation to the Ranch Road property and obviously the expansion of the regional open space, I think, which is associated with that. Are you able, able to speak to the inclusion of that additional area and the basis on which that was made?
Thank you, Deputy Chair. This is one of the areas that was obviously identified as part of the preparation of the district structure plan based on our information at that point in time. Yes, we made it very clear that as part of processing any of the local structure plans, that we, we would need evidence as to what the actual quality of the vegetation is. The vegetation, particularly in the northern part of that site, is actually mapped as excellent. There's a rating of one to five from obviously very low to hot, very high. And then a, a status of pristine, so, which is level six. So which is level six, they had level five through that particular area. It comes down to the uh how you protect that area, which is in excellent condition. And then that how much interface space that you actually give it, you can't just bring a road straight up to where the excellent value is, it needs to be in transition because also one of the things that we are looking at as part of not only that particular site but other sites within there is the opportunity to rehabilitate sites and bring them up to a um an excellent standard or pristine. So yes, I we acknowledge that there is uh the southern part is not necessarily at the same uh quality as the northern part. But we are, we have been chasing, I think very appropriately, environmental outcomes across the whole of the DSP area and where we can add, we believe that you should add. The land owner, sorry, the landowner in this instance did bring up about edge effects. If you do have a small area, the edge effects uh do increase significantly. So by a broader, a larger area, it's a better ratio in it. There is no formal ratio of what the yeah external length should play and area. So we've generally been trying to work on anything in excess of four hectares has been uh been our target.
Thank you. Were there any other questions? If not, we will then move to the item. And there is a, oh, let me get the right page here. We do obviously have an existing recommendation. Is there a mover and or seconder for the recommendation as it currently is within the agenda? Thank you, Commissioner Paul. Seconder, I'll second it. Uh there any proposed modifications to the recommendation? If not, is there any dissent? Right, carried. That takes us to
I'm now moving.
Moving back to deputy commissions, thank you.
The Lakey. So the commission are now moving to deputations on items three point two on the agenda, so three point two is the east group seven structure plan. And the first deputation um on this item is from Jaden Hope, Benita, Shashaki. And sorry, thank you.
Well done, when you're ready, thanks.
Thank you. One of the missions is Jaden Prope from Alter Planning and I'm speaking on this item, um on the landowner of ninety-five road, uh which is only known under the proposed structure plan as the eastern primaries primary school. Uh just to give a bit of background, per the original plan submitted prior to December twenty twenty-three, the site was actually zoned residential. Um and in that time, the developer had the property under contract with the landowner, uh which unfortunately has had many changes of terms and ultimately lapsed. Uh since that time, the amended uh plans now consist of this school uh significantly limiting our clients' uh future development opportunities. Uh make that of what you will, but for us it appears that uh this has occurred out of spite. May twenty twenty-five, our client contacted the relevant uh officer at the Department of Planning. We allegedly was allegedly advised by the developer that our client was happy for the school site to occur on the land. This was never the case and our client feels misrepresented. So with that background, the critical planning concern that we've identified is the location is inconsistent with operational policy two point four, which guides the strategic planning for government school flights in urban areas. Recently, the location is also unsupported by the Department of Education, City Offices and the Council. This we emphasise at a criti- critical point. With the recommendation being that the school be relocated to the area east of Meriden F Road. But OP two point four requires primary schools to be located centrally to the neighbourhood it is intended to serve. The intended location, as we submit, is not situated centrally within the neighbourhood of precinct seven. The school's location should be located east of the intended location to facilitate better connectivity to the transport corridor and to provide a better catchment area as the proposed catchment is heavily restricted by the lake to the west. On this, it is also noted that attachment sixteen in our position is misleading in determining the number of dwellings within the catchment area. Not factor in the catchment area within precinct fifteen and precinct seven alone. Uh it is submitted that the additional dwellings located within the overall catchment area, that being precinct seven and fifteen, would be significantly higher than one hundred and sixty-nine dwellings. Further, concerners also held that the proposed school site is inconsistent with intent of state planning policy three point seven for bushfire, that being, and as quoted, to implement effective risk-based land use planning development, which in the first instance avoids the bushfire risk. The most appropriate location should be chosen by the site which best minimises bushfire risk and not to choose a site that would need to be retrofitted with relevant relevant design and management measures. It is paramount that the school, being a vulnerable land use, must be in an area that would have the least amount of bushfire risk. That being in a limited location for attachment to the same. Failure to do so, in our opinion, is inconsistent with the principles of orderly and proper planning. But in conclusion, the school should be retained on the alternative site, which is on the developer's contracted holdings, which would then be central to its catchment and minimises bushfire risk. In current form, we urge the commission to instruct the applicant to relocate the primary school as part of the decision or at the very least defer until the WIPC is truly convinced what is currently proposed has been appropriately considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Mind any questions? Right, thank you very much for your deputation. Sorry, pardon me. Commissioner Hall.
Thanks Deputy Chair. Thanks for the presentation. I'm just wondering um when when these issues have been raised, what the feedback has been and and the reasons um that's been provided to you?
Yep, so from my understanding, uh we were engaged at the time of advertisement of the structure plan uh before us the ongoing discussions by the landowner um with the previous developer. At that time during advertisement period, we made a submission in terms of for us, the location of the school site. Um and from that submission, further discussions was held between the client and relevant officer at the department directly. Um which Benita would maybe able to give some more clarification on, but from that time it was basically seen that the client was supportive of the proposed site, which was never the case. From there on, we've haven't had much uh communication uh with either developer or department.
Okay, that's a lot to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your deputation.
The next deputation also on item three point two on the agenda, we're welcoming Rachel Chapman and Rachel is joining us via Zoom. I need you just to climb this motor to a panelist. You will need to accept that request in order occasion this morning, so we will just um submit that request. Morning Rachel, um over to you when you're ready. Thank you. You are muted.
Sorry, there we are. Apologies for that. I've been a bit under the weather myself too, so I've been quarantining at home. Um firstly, just wanted to really um stress that we are not objecting to the structure plan per se. Um the structure plan is is actually outside of um the area for which our um client's property um is located. So lot seven hundred um interestingly is just south of that structure plan. Um and sure, so it's just south and sort of just west of the structure plan boundary. Um but there's a modification um that the Department of Planning has put forward, um that has come to our attention, um of which our client peer in property. Um we're not made aware of um the implications. Um so it relates to the the transit corridor and the seventy metre width um that's that's shown and required as a modification. Um it it is depicted as 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 um as going through our um client's property, lot seven hundred, albeit that property is outside the structure plan area. So a- as a minimum, we ask that it um um not be shown um on lot seven hundred as it is outside the structure plan area. Um and but ultimately will be um requesting that some further work be done to determine the suitable location of that corridor, um which is is shared more equitably with um landowners. Um given that the current proposal seems to show the full width of the widening of Franklin Road um impacting uh lot seven hundred. So that's that's some forty-five metres um impacted. So we we were um, we did provide a submission um early on in the process of advertising of the structure plan um in relation to Cape Horn Street um road alignment and the applicant and the city um were supportive of um our request in that regard, which was to again show it more equitably um distributed in relation to the widening um on the properties north and south and and that has been depicted in the um in the list of modifications. So the similar principle we were seeking, um which is um some it's some equitable um consideration of landowners impacted by that transit corridor. And just really just to reiterate that the landowner has had no sort of consultation or been informed of um the impacts of this transit corridor. Um yeah, that's the sort of basic. My submission in writing provides some, you know, more details in relation to that and highlights the property. Um if there's any question about that. Thanks.
Very much. Any questions for Rachel? No, thank you very much for your submission. It'll obviously be an item to be discussed. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I'll I'll try to get quicker on the button. Um uh tha- thanks Rachel for your uh deputation. I I just had a question. You mentioned there's no consultation, but um obviously it was um advertised and and you you're here today, but um ha- have have you had any, no, the ha- ha- can you just confirm if there's been any discussion in in raising that and uh with the city or the department and have, has it been discussed at all?
No, the first time we we saw the transit corridor was um in the in the commission's agenda. And so we were notified that the item was going to be considered. Um and that's because we made a submission on on the structure plan when it was advertised um back back in the day. Um so but from then, other than just keeping track of it, um uh this this modification hasn't been anything that in in terms of the transit corridor that we've had any sort of foreshadowed, been foreshadowed at all with the landowner.
Great, that's very helpful for me to know. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you very much for your submission, Rachel.
Thank you.
Hi.
The next deputation also on item three point three is from John Burgess. John is also joining us via Zoom. Good morning, John. Over to you.
Good morning.
Over to you when you're ready.
Thank you very much. I believe you can hear me okay. Uh good morning, Madam Chair and Commission members. Uh thank you for the opportunity to present my deputation to this morning in relation to lots ten and eleven Cape Horn Street on behalf of our clients, the Colgan family. We'd like to thank the department's planning officers for their collaboration in resolving the design of the subject land, given various changes to the broad LSP area, including access to Cape Horn Street. We'd also like to acknowledge the collaboration with the city's planners and the inputs they have provided um throughout the process. We support the configuration of the SU one site as shown, including the density within the SU one site. We note the WPC is seeking greater density in the LSP area and this site offers such an opportunity. However, at section four, item eleven of the modification schedule, it states the R fifty sixty density code shall apply to lots of budding or directly opposite a special use zone. We note that in other parts of the LSP, this density provision may apply rather than shall apply. We simply seek the same R coding as the SU one site, being R thirty sixty across the whole of our lots to maintain maintain development flexibility. There is clearly a big push by proponents to have this LSP approved and our client wrote to the department suggesting this was premature, given acquisition of the wastewater pump station has not yet been finalised. There thus remains a risk to all parties that the pump station won't be delivered in a location shown on the LSP and this could potentially delay development within and adjacent to the LSP area. Our client has accepted the notion of the pump station from the very beginning and understands the importance of this piece of critical infrastructure. However, as and I'm sure you'll appreciate, it would be very unfair to expect the Colgans would agree to any easements, access, construction or works of any kind in relation to the pump station prior to an agreement for acquisition being finalised with the Water Corporation. To that end, we have attempted to engage the Water Corporation in commercial negotiations for the sale of the site and its associated buffer to them. Our own work has included undertaking EPPC process and committing valuation, showing our real intent. However, we are still waiting on the Water Corporation for formal negotiations to commence. We are aware the department's offices have been actively encouraging the Water Corporation to progress such an agreement and we request the WPC apply some pressure in this regard, given the significant potential risk to the delivery of this and other LSP areas. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commission members.
Thank you. Uh any questions for John? I look to Commissioner Hall particularly. No, okay. The uh I I do have one in relation to the uh the Water Corporation, obviously we can't direct, but in relation to those negotiations, the um you are aware that the officers have obviously been working toward to that end and um uh I I suppose I'm just wanting to be clear what it is that you're asking of the commission here today. Are you saying that we should not make a di- a decision on this today?
Certainly, my client did write to the the WPC suggesting that the decision on the LSP was premature, given the significant nature of this infrastructure um and that i- in our view it is still in limbo. The district structure plan identified lots ten, eleven and uh to the east of us lot one as being potential sites for the wastewater pumping station. And our client from the very, very beginning, as I noted, um was supportive of of having it on their land. But obviously um is aware that there needs to be commercial negotiations for that to happen. There's been a lot of planning that's been going on in the background by some of the other proponents to try and progress this infrastructure being delivered. Uh so there's a lot of work that's been scoping reports, et cetera. Um and our client feels like they're being pressed into a position uh in relation to the infrastructure. Um and they've they've really said, hang on. Uh you know, I think before we move any further, there needs to be an agreement with corporation for acquisition. Uh otherwise, as I've mentioned, it just places this critical infrastructure at risk. It might be that um you know, the the acquisition isn't isn't satisfactory. Um the site may then go into uh a compulsory acquisition process which would would potentially delay um the provision of the infrastructure or it might have to be relocated to one of the other uh sites identified in the DSP. So I guess, Commissioner, just in relation to your your direct question, um we we are aware of the officers pressing the the corporation. Um and I think, you know, we we would like to see some assistance wherever you can from from the commission in giving them a nudge as well uh to try and move this along, um given it is is such a key piece of infrastructure servicing a broad area.
Thank you. With no other questions, I uh thank you very much for your deputation.
Thank you.
Next deputation also on item three point two, we're welcoming Rod Dixon, Grant Shepherd, Holly White, Robin Hinton and Shane McSweeney, and I believe Shane is joining by. Shane has not been able to join us.
Hi everyone, thank you for your time and thank you for the opportunity of deputation. My name is Grant Shepherd. I'm uh along with Holly White from uh Hesperia and uh Robin and Rod from Row Group. Just starting off, wanted to um reiterate our support for the department's recommendation on the local structure plan of precinct seven. Speer has been involved in precinct seven since twenty twenty and has taken the lead in driving um or the preparation of precinct seven local structure plan and other planning approvals. Um just as a bit of a bit of a context, precinct seven, as you'd be familiar, is is highly fragmented with over a hundred landowners. Um which creates challenges with relation to structure planning. Um and uh we are excited about where we've landed. Um and the 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 current um structure plan uh and what that delivers for future residents um and the community uh moving forward. One of the challenges regarding the fragmented nature of the precinct has been strategic planning, um which is different to spatial planning of, you know, in large and global sites, which we've been sort of accustomed to um in uh i- in in past years. The approach that we've taken has efficiently i- i- is to efficiently progress the stru- structure plan is to have a clear strategy that underpins precinct seven. A major focal point which occurred from with the city of uh Waneroo was around the proximity and the setting of uh Lake Marigina. And that's been a really unique um, you know, aspect to precinct seven, but also provides a a really great opportunity to connect um and uh and embrace that as a big piece of the community moving forward with amenity and uh social infrastructure alike. The spirit is um ready to commence delivery. We've got a structured plan approval for two hundred and seventy lots in the system at the moment. Uh and looking to commence bulk earthworks next month um and uh tie for the targeting titles in Q two twenty twenty six. So we are um raring to go uh to deliver affordable housing to to the market. And just finally, before I hand over to to Rob, just wanted to thank Matt Selby, Glenn and Charlotte for their ongoing collaboration and um and new arrangement on this on this structure plan. Right, sorry.
Thanks, uh forty seconds. All right. So uh next slide, please. Um we're obviously supportive of the report and recommendation. I'll take you through the slides just to try and be as succinct as possible. Um next slide, please. Uh next slide. Next slide. I think it's simplest if I focus on this. Look, a strong um driver for the design of this structure plan has been the Lake Marigina. Um focus and the environs and creating green linkages to and opportunities for reading of the area. Uh very much reflective of the city's own comments to you today. Uh you see some strong um east, west and north, south linkages on the back of that. Um the location of um the education sites around the lake has been influenced and informed by that to provide safe and convenient access to those schools. Uh you can see on the right hand side, the transit corridor, that's been a key um consideration, certainly quite impactful on the um residential area to the east side. Um and that's influenced east, west, or only um mention at the end of Capone Station and then a central connection across that. So in terms of catchments for school planning, it's certainly informed and influenced the location of the eastern primary school site. I'll probably leave it at that given time. Can we just go to the last slide? Okay, so it should read as um modification one D V. Uh in terms of the modifications under that one D item, we just want to flag that reference to updating the local road network needs to take into account the refinement and service connection from the pump station site through to Capone. Now, I will say there is a signed scoping agreement for that pump station site with Water Corporation and also a signed development constructed works agreement and a hundred thousand dollar bond paid for the progression of that pump station. Appreciate the comments earlier regarding land acquisition. Uh it's only logical that that would follow or run in parallel to the commission's decision today. Uh certainly at a very advanced nature, and we just ask that that easement or road reserve action be reflected in that mod. Uh apologies for the overtime or length of it.
Thank you. Uh questions? Commissioner Hall.
Thanks, Deputy Chair. Thanks for the deputation. Um I was just hoping you could also talk to um the uh school site for the Department of Education um from Altus and the transit corridor and um the modification to show up beyond the structure plan. Are you able to talk to those, please?
But maybe if I could just jump in with the school site, I think, and as what we were trying to say albeit succinctly, was that the the overarching strategy for um the school site locations from the outset was to um to co-locate them adjacent to the to the Lake Marigina. Because of the intended um public amenity that the city of Waneroo and um this site presents itself. It was a really for school location to be, you know, adjacent to and um and integrate with the Lake Marigina for safe connection, bike connection, um outdoor education opportunities um in indigenous sort of engagement and and the like. So this, the setting of precinct seven provided a really unique um opportunity to do things slightly differently. The um the location of the the school site and where it's ended up in um uh in the first round of uh advertising for the structure plan through the city of Waneroo, the site was slightly to the south of um of that uh of where it is now. The feed, the initial feedback from uh Department of Education was that uh there was concerns about bushfire. As a result of um their initial feedbacks, uh the uh local structure plan was amended to its current location to address the the feedback. As part of uh the city of Waneroo's uh process, uh it was re-advertised to affected landowners at that point. But prior to going to the city of Waneroo's council, um and that sort of is where we we've got to now. So apart from, you know, taking what where we've got to from a strategic perspective has been always, how do we co-locate? Uh and the east of the western site, the school site, the high school's school site has been consistent with similar challenges like bushfire. But those ones are, we believe, are are all of those considerations can be managed appropriately.
But I suppose, and again, well, I'll let you go on to the other items, but just, I think specifically discussions with the Department of Education are that they are supportive of this current location. Is that?
So the Department of Education, when we've engaged with them, have taken a position of that it needs to, like, as per their policy, it needs to be um centrally located. Our view and when we're engaged with the the department officers has been that uh it's a policy, it's a guiding policy, and there's a, there's the ability to, whilst it's not exactly central to the the catchment. It's uh it's it still performs a function um appropriately, but also adds a far greater benefit for the local uh environment uh that, you know, precinct seven operates in, and that's unique to precinct seven and not to other um areas within the broader east Waneroo area.
But I perhaps just add to that. In discussing centrality, um I don't know if we could bring up the plan for the precinct um from our presentation. The department raised bushfire. The relocation of the site slightly north of its original location addresses that, while still um providing the lakeside um safe routes to school initiative. Um it also moves to be, generally speaking, more on a single property, uh which appreciate no one to have the school, but it needs to be located. We need to provide a school. Uh you'd address that. A a key driver, though, when we talk about centrality and access to school, the transit corridor acts as somewhat of a divide. We have to respond to the central east-west route. It allows the catchment on the east side of the transit corridor to move through and to that school. That was a consideration originally and remains a consideration. Um there are two contemplated pedestrian locations, north and south of that, um that have also informed the thinking. So there's a mixture of things. Um would we say we've addressed everything for education? No. Have we addressed most? Yes. That's, I guess, further commented on in the report.
And in relation to the transit corridor and its inclusion uh beyond the structure plan, can you speak to that?
Uh yes, uh so, and I noted from the other um deputation, uh some of the comments. So the transit corridor final alignment uh was provided to us in the lead up to the commission's consideration, the lifting last month. We've always known, landowners have known, transit corridor run through there. Naturally, as details come to hand, it's changed slightly. Um station location adjustments. They've been reflected in the final version. Um most of the landowners have been affected differently. Albeit edge effects as a result of that refinement. Um but it's important is an integration of the structure plan with that that transit corridor.
So just for my clarity, so the transit corridor alignment was provided to you and simply rated to your document, is that correct?
That's correct. What I'm really saying is the level of detail has got better as we've gone along here. And we're now at a point where, yes, there has been some changes in the final version provided, but that is reflected in the plan before you.
Thank you. So Commissioner Hall, does that cover off on your items?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Chair.
Are there any other questions of the deputies? If not, um thank you very much for your question today. Double deputations. So we'll move to the item. So have the officers, thank you. And perhaps if we turn to the officers first in terms of um uh any uh items in the report having been written, perhaps uh specifically as it relates to the uh queries that have been put forward as part of deputations.
Uh thank you, Deputy Chair. I'll probably start initially with the uh schools. So could I have the those papers? Thank you. In terms of the uh because we've been considering, you have been considering precinct seven, eight and fifteen today. We've worked in reverse to ensure that when we were dealing with these, that we've treated the whole of this, the three precincts as a um as an amalgam, to ensure that we are dealing with it in the best spatial arrangement. And to also then build off the environment of which ex Waneroo is located within. And obviously trying to also create and ensure that a sense of place, as per the city of Waneroo's comments earlier in the day are actually realised. When we've been dealing with the school sites, uh as um Speer and Grant has uh indicated, the school site was moved on the eastern side of the lake. But it's been a result of some analysis that we've looked at of where the broader schools are within the overall three precincts. And we've landed on and support the location of where where this particular one is. By our uh Department of Education having a different view.
Sorry, just for the purposes of those online, the indication is is the uh school site to the northeast? In the
On with the common structure plan area. Thank you. To it. We've effectively, we've ended up with, because of the way that the uh the area is and and this is all within precinct seven. We've actually ended up with three schools adjacent to the lake to be able to maximise the value of the lake and its uh environment. So we've actually got the high school to the south. East is the primary school and another primary school to the the southwestern corner. Obviously, in terms of the where the school locations are, there there will be a road network that sits between the respective schools and the lake by and obviously then setting it slightly further back and also with the provision of ovals, et cetera. Uh we'll address the the bushfire risk that's actually within that area as well. The the structure plan obviously has to deal with uh where these are and as has been commented, we need to provide them. So there will be the configuration of trying to get four hectares in a single ownership won't occur. It will be a couple of owners that will need to have their land uh purchased by DOE to ensure delivery of uh the school sites, not dissimilar to what's actually happened within the Henley Brook area where uh a structure plan was approved by the commission um a couple of years ago. And DOE went and acquired sites early to ensure that there was actually delivery in a timely manner. I'll wander through some of the other.
You'd want to talk to the lot seven hundred component there.
That's exactly where I was going. Thank you, Deputy Chair. In terms of the uh the transit corridor has been uh under a process of design over the uh the last six or twelve months uh by consultants on behalf of the department. The the lot seven hundred immediately is adjacent to the transit corridor, which was always identified in the district structure plan and was designated a seventy metre uh width, thereby requiring that land be acquired either side. Once we've actually got into the detailed design led by the IPP area within the department, there's some environmental values that are actually if I may point out through that area. And some environmental values here, which have necessitated.
For the purposes of those online, it's the areas immediately to the east of the transit corridor, immediately north of the boundary.
It it's necessitated the slight move to the west of the actual uh future transit corridor, which ultimately it will be a blue road, be funded within the the D C P. It will be uh dual carriage either way with uh mode agnostic uh public transport sitting within the middle in the the longer, longer term. So it's still sufficiently wide enough and it will still slightly vary even when you get to the uh the the final design uh and be uh implemented by the the city of Waneroo. There, as I said, there's always been, and we've have been uh open and honest with all of the landowners that we have spoken to and proponents that please uh because we're still in the design phase, stay away from that kind of corridor, but expect that they've been backed on uh land adjacent to it. So I very much played that early and consistently since the preparation of the DSP. Um in relation to the pump station to the north of Capone Street that uh Mr Burgess referred to. Mr Dixon, yes, we have been in constant dialogue and I even had an email from Water Corp only recently to um to discuss the matter in relation to the acquisition. Water Corp have ultimately been waiting. Property acquisition section within Water Corp has been awaiting the uh commission's determination on the structure plan or ultimately going, yes, it is. The if negotiations failed with the with Mr Colgan, the the current landowner and where it has been identified. There is the ability for that pump station to move within that particular area, but there, I think that the negotiations have probably, or the consideration have advanced significantly enough that now Water Corp will actually uh directly go and uh talk to Mr Colgan and acquire the land, which would then not only facilitate precinct seven, but it's linked to precinct fifteen, but it's also the land immediately to the south of Capone that it has already had a structure plan approved and subdivision approved as well, which uh Kew or one of the the major developers in that. And there's about four hundred lots, I think, in that cell on the southern side of Capone Street as well. And in terms of the, and we spoke with Mr Dixon in relation to protecting the uh the easement through that area, we can deal with that subdivision as well and very easy with a a small road extension uh to ensure that there is, it's not a trafficable road from Capone, but it's ultimately a protection of the future sewer alignment. I think that's all in relation to deputations.
Thank you. Uh any questions?
Yes, Deputy Chair. Just um thank you, Matt, for that. Um just on the specific question that Rachel ch- Yes, Deputy Chair, just um, thank you Matt for that. Um, just on the specific question that Rachel Chapman. Uh, T B B for the corridor not to be shown on the, their client's land. Because it's outside the structure plan area. Um, I just want to get your thoughts on that.
Uh, thank you Commissioner, three Deputy Chair. It's really an interesting one about whether you should or you shouldn't show. Uh, issues that sit technically outside of a local structure plan area. However, as uh, landowners from proponents move through the planning system. It's about tying in structure plans from one to the next and to ensure that there's, if they go looking at. What is not only, because we understand precinct six is about to be lodged with the city of Wanneroo within the very short space of time. So you'll be dealing with that at some point in the future. The more information that can be provided on a structure plan about the context. And the interface between two structure plans, I think the more that you show, the better. In relation to. That particular lot, it will need to show and protect that corridor when it comes along. So, um. I've always been, the more information that we can have earlier in the stage, the better to protect the infrastructure that needs to be delivered as part of. As part of the overall area, not just specifically precinct seven in this instance.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hall and then the Chair.
Thanks Deputy Chair. Uh, my question, Matt, is just around the, the process and we, we heard from Rachel that. Um, when the modifications were recommended, that there was no uh, sort of, understandably no advertising, but no. Consultation with those affected. Are, are you able to just speak to that and, and give a reason why that's the case?
Thank you Commissioner Hall, through you Deputy Chair. The, it's all about the timing and the sequencing of the process of events to actually get to. Uh, to get to the ultimate delivery and identification of the area. As I said before, the D S P. Has always envisaged a seventy metre plus corridor through that area. The direct, that there's probably going to be two additional layers of consultation that occurs. And will refine exactly the footprint that sits over that is that, as I said, there's the. Uh, the blue road being Sydney Road extension through that area is going through a design process at the moment. And because we will need to protect that in advance of um, actually defining the blue road through the M R S process. There'll be consultation and we'll protect it through a planning control area, which will then directly uh, enable. The department and the commission to engage with affected landowners on that particular one. But also, the commission has dealt with the urban lifting, which we uh, provided the commission with the ultimate, with the. Most accurate and latest information on what that design actually looks like. So it's probably slightly. Back to front if we're dealing in a perfect world, but because we've been trying to advance on multiple fronts. All of the issues that we've been dealing with is probably not a perfect solution and I think probably one of the lessons learned that we'll take away out of. East Wanneroo and how we move forward. We'd like to be on the front foot a lot earlier with particularly some of the roads, which we take through to uh, to fifteen. Percent design criteria. Uh, it's not perfect, we acknowledge that, but I will go back to my opening comments that. Those who have looked at the district structure plan and uh, and its contents, it's been very clearly articulated that there will be an impact. On Sydney Road landowners moving into the future.
Thank you.
To the Chair.
Thank you very much Deputy Chair. Um, Matt, I was writing some notes. I'm not sure if I missed it, but did you address um, John Burgess's request? For higher density. He was talking about the difference between may and shall apply and was keen to see. The ability to have the R thirty to R sixty over his um, his uh, repri- the person he's representing, land holding.
Thank you Chair. You're right, I missed that one. Uh, we have no problems with the wording being changed. Within the L S P to refle- to reflect shell. I do have a uh. A concern with having it as such a broad range of R thirty to R sixty. That's not quite in accordance with our, with our um. Our guidelines and the, the manual. It should be R thirty, R forty and then R sixty based on locational criteria. Within it. Uh, I suspect that that particular piece of land, Chair, may go through some further iterations and ultimate. Uh, refinement based on the exact footprint that Water Corporation in terms of its land acquisition may need. So that's part of that, uh, will require further refinement. We can deal with it at the structure plan or even amendment, or we can actually deal with those issues at a subdivision as uh. Land advances to the development phase in that particular area.
Okay, so just to be clear, you don't believe we need to make a modification, the flexibility will be there to consider that at the future stages.
Chair, I believe we've got the flexibility to be able to deal with it and ensure that we have a pragmatic and realistic outcome over that site.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions? If there's not, we will move to the item. And there is a recommendation on page three.
Deputy, there was an updated schedule for this, so we do have a subsequent updated recommendation that makes reference to the amended odds.
Okay, that amended recommendation. Thank you. So if members are comfortable, we will. Take the uh, amended recommendation that is shown on the screen. Is there anyone who is uh, prepared to move the recommendation? Thank you. And seconded by Commissioner Hall, thank you. Uh, any dissent? Would you speak to the item?
I, I wouldn't mind. Thank you Deputy Chair. I just wanted to um, to sort of state this has been a long journey for everyone and. I particularly want to mend all the parties and the proponents and particularly Matt and his team. For being able to get to where we are today. I mean, it's a massive undertaking, um, a lot of challenges and con- and conflicting. Directions and to be able to get to where we are now, which is a, a good uh, outcome, I think for that areas is to be commended. I, I, I certainly note the deputations that came through and understand the reasoning for those considerations. And, and also the response by the department and but on balance, I think, um, we've got a robust. Uh, outcome here and I'm happy to um, recommend this.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall.
Thanks Deputy Chair. Yes, look, I um, uh, happy to second and uh, support Commissioner Lakey's comments. It is a complex uh, precinct. Uh, the work, I believe, uh, is very good in the sense that it progresses. The area to be able to create a future community, a place where a community can live. Uh, offers flexibility as no doubt there is a lot more work still to be had. Um, so this uh, is a, is a good uh, step forward. And happy to support the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, sorry.
Just a couple of very quick comments from me. I just wanted to add that um, this particular precinct has got some very attractive features. I think it's been really nice to see the character area northeast of the lake incorporated and also the special use zone with um, Bearman House being celebrated. Um, I think that, you know, this is an incredibly comprehensive report and process that's been undertaken. So I'm satisfied that the school locations have been um, explored um, very comprehensively and I accept the rationale that's been outlined by. Both the applicant and the department in terms of the locations that have been um, determined. Um, for our, well, have been recommended for our determination. Um, I also just want to acknowledge the transit corridor impact on adjoining landowners and, and note that. You know, we have had that outline that there will be consultation through the P C A um, that will come. Um, but also just wanted to acknowledge, it's really, um, I really appreciate that the um, Matt Solby and the team are able to acknowledge that it. You know, perhaps that's not a perfect process, but when you consider all of the elements that have been having to be drawn together. And all of the negotiations with all of the various agencies, I think that the team has put in best efforts here. Um, and I just really want to say that in relation to the comprehensive nature of the reports that we've received today. I'm not sure that we um, receive reports of this detail regularly and I just want to compliment the team in doing just a really comprehensive exercise in. Working through all of the multifaceted issues that um, that has uh, come through. Um, dealing with East Wanneroo and now down to the local structure plan stage. So um, yeah, it's really fantastic to be in this position. That we've been able to move through these stages of planning um, in this, in this um, timeframe. Um, and really pleased to be able to support the um, L S P. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll agree with all of those comments and unless there was any dissent, I will. Say the item is carried. Thank you. Oh yes, as we're now closing the meeting. Okay, that is all the public items. Um, I will now need a mover and a seconder to move into confidential items. Thank you. And um, Commissioner Hall seconding, thank you.